Board of Trustees. For those of you who came looking for a Finance Committee meeting, we did not have one tonight because there were so few things on the finance agenda and we felt that we could accomplish all that during this, during the regular meeting. I'm picking up some reverb out here, Noah, if you can adjust that slightly, we really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'm trying not to look too far either side here. Thanks, Joe. So you recognize it too. I'd like the, our Administrator Gloria, would please call the, take the role?
Trustee Cawthorne?
Yeah.
President Klein?
Yeah.
Stanford?
Here.
O'Brien, Bergman? Absent. Thomas?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
Zappa?
All right, first thing on the agenda after, or next thing on the agenda is a review and approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of February 2nd. I would ask the members of the Board of Trustees if you, I'm sure you've reviewed these, any corrections or comments regarding them?
The only thing I saw, paragraph number five in the italicized area, said that the motion passed on a roll call vote of seven to zero. Thomas, yes. Whalen, yes. But I believe, I know I was absent and so I think that should probably be a five to zero vote. Other than that, everything looked good to me.
Jim, is that on page one?
Page one, yeah, the bottom italicized paragraph.
That would be correct. Thank you.
So there are two changes to make there, one a six to zero vote and to delete your name.
That would be a five to zero.
Five to zero, mine and Whalen's.
Oh, and Whalen also. Okay.
Just to clarify, that, that vote was not taken at the February meeting, that was taken at the November of 2009 meeting. So I believe, I believe that everybody was present at that meeting.
I read this earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, I apologize, I was following, okay, you're right, absolutely.
All right. Much gets by. I'll tell you what, Jim, I'm gonna turn this back to you and say, would you like to make a motion regarding these meetings? I would like to move that we approve these meeting minutes as is. As written. All right, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sandra. All in favor of approving the meeting minutes from February 2nd as written, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Is it this time of the meeting when we give, have an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of issues? And I know we have at least one guest. Fred, would you like to take the podium, introduce yourself? Fred's gonna be talking to us about Kiwanis.
Good evening. George, thank you for meeting with me the other day and inviting me to come to this meeting of the Village of North Hudson. My name is Fred Dietz and I am a Lieutenant Governor for Kiwanis International and I'm Lieutenant Governor of Division 20 of the Wisconsin Upper Michigan District for Kiwanis. I cover everything from River Falls all the way to Chippewa Falls, with the exception of New Richmond, which is sort of in the middle and they belong to another division. The reason for my coming here tonight is to inform you that we are creating a brand new Kiwanis club here in the greater Hudson area. Kiwanis is about children and Kiwanis has been in existence for 95 years. Our New Richmond Club here in the area just celebrated their 90th anniversary as a club. So we have been a presence in the area, but we have never been a presence in the Hudson community itself. When I moved back to this part of Wisconsin, two years ago, I was rather surprised that there was no Kiwanis club. With that in mind, I wound up joining the River Falls Kiwanis Club. And then for some ungodly reason, I think because of my military training, you never take, retreat, never take a step back when they ask for volunteers to become Lieutenant Governor. I looked around and there was nobody next to me. So I wound up becoming Lieutenant Governor and one of my goals was to establish a new club in Hudson. We are having a open house in Hudson and the Community Room at the Hudson Library on Tuesday, March 23rd. We're gonna start at 7:00 in the morning and run it all day long till 7:00 in the evening. We're going to have three formal presentations during that time, one at 7:30, one at 12:30, and one at 6:30. So people can come to the library and find out what Kiwanis is all about. We've completed a site survey, the New Richmond Club and the River Falls Club conducted the site survey jointly and we found out there's a need. But there isn't just a need for money. Do not think of Kiwanis as a fundraising organization, even though we do raise funds and every dollar that we raise goes back into the community that we raise it in. We are also a hands-on type of organization. Right now, someplace in the world, there is a Kiwanian greeting to a child. There is a Kiwanian giving the first book to a child. There is a Kiwanian handing a teddy bear to a child that has been traumatized. Or a police officer is handing that teddy bear to that child because Kiwanis donated those teddy bears. That's what Kiwanis does. We are a hands-on service organization. With that in mind, I'm here to simply give you information and to tell you a little bit about what we are about and to invite all of you to come and attend our open house. Come for as long and as short as you want. We'll have Kiwanians there that can talk to you about Kiwanis and if you're not too careful, we'll glad hand you enough to get you to sign an application to become a member. Do I have any questions? Did I keep it under my five minutes?
Sure did.
There we go. I'm just gonna lay these over here and you can pass these out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Next on the agenda is new business from the Board or staff and it starts off with the President's comments. In each board packet, the very next thing that you will find is Google. It says right at the top. And this is a document that I printed off, it's, it's a, actually, half, part of this is a PDF file that is at the beginning of the Google site for fiber optics for communities. I wanna talk briefly about this because I know that there are people out there who may have heard the news about Google giving away fiber optics to communities, making it available. So I went online at the, at the requisite website and I started reading this. Had I printed out this entire document from that PDF file, it would have been 22 pages. What I did was I actually shortened the information down, if you turn to what would be page nine, you'll see Google Fiber for Communities and this is all of the information that Google is actually looking for. The eight pages that precede that, after you get past the cover and the table of contents, is what this is all about. I have also had the opportunity to talk to the Mayor of City of Hudson, Dean Knutson, recently and the city and I have come to the same conclusion. You may want to adjust my recommendations, you may have your own recommendations on this. But it seems to us that Google is looking for the whole country to do a study of their infrastructure and provide it to them. Isn't that nice? Google would like very much to know how many utility poles we have in the village. They'd like to know how much we would charge, I'm not making this up, this is in this document. They would like to know how much they would be charged to hang their fiber optics underneath the Comcast, underneath the telephone, underneath the power, which are already there. And you can read through this document, it'll tell you all the other information they want. The other thing that we discovered was that Google would only be giving away this service in municipalities of between 50,000 and 500,000. Well, let's see, we've got 3,700 people in the village, the odds of us getting any appropriation from Google is borders on nil. Even when combined with the City of Hudson, it's unlikely that we could get it. So that what the city and what the village would have to do would be to establish a consortium with other surrounding municipalities until we finally met a minimum quota. By the time we would be done doing all this work, the, it would have, the opportunity would have expired, I believe at sometime in the middle of March, when we would have had to have all this information ready. I want the public to know, I want you to know that we did look at this, we did consider it and we've decided that when Google wants to make this available and come into our community and give it to us, at that time, we will seriously consider it. To look at this as if we alone in the village were to go through the long task of gathering all this information, keep in mind that the village is like an island. And it's unlikely that Google would be interested in the village when you consider where they would have to go, they'd have to go through the city to get to us. So there are probably a lot of good reasons why, thank you very much, Google, but we'll pass on this one. Does anybody have any questions on this or any comments?
Comment, interesting tidbit on Netscape today and the dance that people are, the communities are going through, as you say, to gather the Google information is rather amusing. By proclamation of the Mayor of Topeka, Kansas, they, for the next 30 days, are referring to themselves as Google, Kansas. They're not legally changing their name, but in order to elevate themselves in the eyes of the Google competition, they are now referring themselves for the next month as Google, Kansas. So it's getting a little nutso.
I'd like Google to come in with their own engineers if they're really interested in us. Anybody else? Thank you. I do have a couple other topics that I would like to share with you, some bother me a little bit. I'll hold that one off till the end. Neighborhood Watch. I attended Neighborhood Watch last week. There were four of us, plus a police officer. I was a little dismayed that our Neighborhood Watch doesn't have a little bit more of a attendance and interest. The officer gave a very good presentation to the four of us on, what do you do if you hear conflict in your neighborhood? Call 911. I'm boiling it down, I'm making it very brief. He handed out a, he handed out a flyer to us, it's about Turning Point, and we asked him if he would present this again at the next meeting. I then conducted in my own little unscientific poll and my question to a couple different groups was the following, what does Neighborhood Watch mean to you? When I say Neighborhood Watch, what do you think about? And what I got was, well, that's people wearing armbands and carrying flashlights at night walking around the neighborhood and making sure the neighborhood is safe. I said, oh, really? And that's actually what the history of Neighborhood Watch was all about. In fact, Neighborhood Watch started out in neighborhoods where there was a crime problem and our Neighborhood Watch perhaps is a misnomer. Our Neighborhood Watch is actually an opportunity for people to get together here in Village Hall and have some really interesting presentations by our police department and getting to know our police officers on a first-name basis and getting to know what they face during the course of their workday. I see the Chief is here and if you have anything you'd like to add on that, Mark? Okay? I would encourage folks to come out, if you're interested in getting, just finding out about Neighborhood Watch, give Becky O'Keefe, the Police Department's Admin Assistant, give her a call and say, I'd like to be on the email list. Can you tell me, can you get me on the email list so I can learn more about what's going on? The email list is quite extensive now, there's probably, what, Mark, at least 25 names on it and, but if you're interested, please give Becky a call and get on that list. So I was quite fascinated, I've been to several of them now and quite impressed. Next topic, Operation Help. I noticed a article in the Hudson Star Observer of February 18th, Operation Help launches website. And the only reason I'm bringing it up today is we had had Operation Help representatives here giving a presentation last year and in fact, this article, I'm gonna put it in the white binder that's in our anteroom over here and anybody who is interested in learning more about Operation Help, if you missed the article, again, February 18th article, you can stop in and take a look in that, in that book. The last item I have on here is, to me, quite disturbing and I, I am bringing it up because it bothers me that much. You'll get the idea when I read the headlines. This is from Thursday, February 4th, Another North Hudson Drinking Party is Raided. The ages of the people who were cited for underage possession and consumption of alcohol, 20, 18, 17, 19, 19. And one of them was cited for possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia as well. The other one was from January 21st, Teens Ring in a New Year with Tickets for Underage Drinking. I wanna read the date, the ages of those people who were cited, 17, 18, 18, 18, 19, 19, 18, 18, 19, 18, 18, 18. In today's Twins, St. Paul Pioneer Press, page 2A, Number of Teens Using Alcohol and Pot Rises. You wanna read, it's on page 2A. This is disturbing on a number of fronts, especially when it comes to parents who think they're doing their kids, being their friends and inviting them to have a drinking party in the house, what harm can that do? Folks, you're doing your kids a disservice. I read another article where the ages of the kids were 13, 14, and 15. What are you trying, what message are you trying to convey to your children and their friends? I sure don't know what it is, I can take a guess, but I just assume not. The Chief and I had an opportunity to talk a little bit about this and he told me about a program called Parents Who Host Lose the Most. Don't Be a Party to Teenage Drinking. I'm not gonna read any of this except to make this available and I see John from the Hudson Star Observer is here. John, I will give you this page, if you would like to, you can capture the website and the URL. If there's anyone, there's, we have so many programs in this area and if there's somebody who would like to get involved with this program, it's a program of education of people on the harm that can be done with it. And again, I turn to Mark, anything you would like to add to that? Thank you. That's, I hope my frustration with that is coming across. Next item is the, is an item we, I think this is a first, Becky. Administrator's comments.
Well, that would be Gloria, she gets to go first.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a, Administrator, I'm sorry. I'm looking down at item C in anticipation of you, Becky. You're the new one, you're, we have item C on here, Village Clerk's Comments.
Yesterday was my sixth year here.
Sixth year here?
Yep, sixth.
Wow. Do we sing happy anniversary to you again?
No.
Six years?
Just quickly, April meeting, because of the spring election, will not be held in April, it will be held, well, I'm hoping for the 30th of March, that's what we tentatively put it down for and hopefully the majority of the board members can make that, 6 o'clock for Finance and 7 for Board on, it's a Tuesday night.
Do we need a motion on that?
If, if, yeah, it's probably a good idea if we have a regular.
You probably do because it's in the.
Regular Board.
If it's in our ordinances in that regular board meeting, we probably should, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion that the April Board Meeting be March 30th. I'll so move. Thank you, Joe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, having the board meeting on March 30th, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is something we do every year because we have to. And now, Village Clerk's Comments, a new item on the agenda.
You're, you're putting way too much pressure on me, George.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I think all of you probably noticed when you came in that there are some mugs and T-shirts that were provided to us from the U.S. Census Bureau, so being that we've received those items and that we have made a commitment to partner with the Census Bureau to promote the census, I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind everybody that their questionnaires should be arriving in the mail approximately middle of March, around the 15th of March. You're asked to return them to the Census Bureau by April 1st is the, their target date, that's what they officially call Census Day, is April 1st. Those questionnaires will, are apparently the shortest this year that they've ever been, there are 10 questions and answering them will help to determine our congressional representation, determine local funding of different programs and also provide us with funding, federal funding to local governments as well as state governments. So everybody's encouraged to fill out those forms and get them back. We will also be putting out an XM voicemail through the village's voicemail system to remind everybody to get those questionnaires filled out and returned.
And what, you had made a statement the other day that after, if they don't return the first one, they are sent a second one and if they don't return that, someone comes to their door and what is the cost?
They are estimating that this, the census this year could cost the federal government approximately $14 billion to conduct. Apparently, the cost to send an numerator or a census taker to your home to gather your information is between $65 and $75 per household. So it's much easier to have you just fill out that first form and send it back. They will send a second form if you don't fill out the first and then somebody will come to your door to, to get the census information. So please return them promptly and avoid hitting that $14 billion mark.
I wonder if it's the T-shirts, coffee mugs and.
They are awfully nice. They are awfully nice.
Yeah, they are.
Yep.
Looking forward to wearing my black T-shirt.
The other thing I would just quickly comment on is in your packets is the information from the, the spring primary election and reminder, Gloria mentioned that we do have the spring elections coming up on April 6th. If you are in need of registering or if you know you are gonna be away that day, you can come into the, the Village Hall here to register to vote or to request an absentee ballot. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Not to be an advocate necessarily for the census, but there was a radio on, on Wisconsin Public Radio today, they said that for each person counted, that brings in 12,000 federal dollars to the local community over a 10-year period, so.
Each person?
Yeah.
So fill out your census.
Wow. Okay. I was gonna fill it out anyway, Terry.
I don't know how they got that statistic, that was just, there was somebody from the census, so maybe it's a suspect statistic, I don't know.
I was thinking of the $14 billion to, the cost of taking a census and if you were to divide that up equally among all the people in the United States, you'd find out what each, each one of those is. Coffee mugs and T-shirts, okay. Item five, Request for Extraterritorial CSM Escrow Waiver by NWP Holdings. Is that what you guys are here about? Okay. The mic is yours. Is that, that's this?
There's a replacement, yep.
Okay, excuse me, just a second. There is a replacement for the page that's in your binder and it was laying loose on your desk when you came in. Okay.
Thank you. John Sonata with SNN Land Surveying here on behalf of NWP Land Holdings, where the company helping along with SEH put this project together. And again, thank you for the opportunity to come discuss this issue. We have a plat that we're working on out on Cratley Road just past Pheasant Trail that kinda connects over to Miller Road and through that project, it's in the town of Hudson, St. Croix County, we have to go through concept, preliminary plat, and final plat review. We've gone through concept review with the town, the county, and with the village and now we're on to the preliminary plat submittal and through that preliminary plat submittal, we have fees required at the, at St. Croix County of approximately $8,000 to $9,000 plus a CSM. We have kinda two projects together, there's one preliminary plat covering the whole project, which is about 27 lots, and then there's one lot that's being cut off right now for an existing house, that's one CSM. And then the town, through their process, will be paying fees at the back end when we do a final plat. As far as within the village and their extraterritorial review authority, there's nothing really in your ordinance that treats those separately or uniquely from a plat that's within the village limits and I guess we're requesting at this time just some relief from that requirement to more, better reflect what the village engineer and possibly the village attorney might be spending on, for their time on that project to represent that, that fee. And I think currently the fee structure would be approximately about $10,800, I believe, somewhere right around there if we were to follow the typical preliminary plat submittals and that would be an escrow count that would be drawn on, plus, I guess, plus $1,000 for the, the one lot certified submittal.
I see in the suggested motion talks about a $3,000 escrow, is it?
Um.
Can you comment on that or?
I just had kind of put that out as a possibility based on past ETZs that have come through and what we've ended up with, possible expenses, so it should cover. And even if it didn't, per code, it says that you would reimburse the village for anything that we spent on it, so.
Is that too reasonable to your organization?
I mean, I don't think that's far off, I don't know, Kevin, if you have an expectation. I guess I'm not certain how much review the village engineer is anticipating, if he does that, that would be fine, but.
Yeah, I guess, you know, on our end, we had some discussions, Becky and I, she had called me just to try to get an idea of what kind of a cost, you know, we would incur on something like this and since it is out in the ETZ area, you know, our review isn't gonna be as extensive if it is within the corporate limits. So I guess on our end, we were looking around $400 to $500 at the most for our review time. So, just to give you kind of an idea of, you know, what our fees would be, so.
And then as far as attorney fees, that would be the other.
Well, that's, that's.
Yep.
They got it up to $3,000.
I really can't give you a good estimate because it'll kinda depend on whether we bump into any issues or not. I think we've probably spent about an hour so far on it, maybe another hour really, unless, unless issues arise.
Yeah, $3,000.
I'm sure that $3,000 is plenty, but if you feel that it's, if it's too much, then we, we need to.
I guess, in our mind, we had somewhere around $2,000 is probably what we were anticipating that would give you a pretty good cushion and then if something really went awry, that would probably mean that we'll be coming back to subsequent meetings and at that time, you probably could hold on any decisions and request additional, you know, to refund that escrow count.
What do you, what kind of motion you need, a dollar amount?
You could just take the suggested motion and change the dollar amount.
I'll do the suggested motion and $800.
Seems a little low.
A second?
We can't sell anything unless it's paid up.
Well, I'd like, we should hear, we should state the motion.
Read the motion if you will, Mark.
Yeah, where is it?
Here. On page.
Motion to reduce the escrow free requirement for NWP Holdings LLC for the Whispering Oak Subdivision to $1,500 with the understanding that NWP Holdings LLC would be required to place additional funds in escrow to cover any unanticipated charges incurred related to this subdivision.
Thank you.
I'll second, if nobody has.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any discussion? The fees that are outlined in the five.
The fees that are outlined in the five lines that total up to seventeen, seven fifty, are these fees that have been used before? Just, that's a formula? I mean, if the next person comes in and they say, hey, I don't want to pay more than five hundred dollars, what's gonna stop, or what, where are we gonna get some kind of structured?
It was in the corporate limits of the village. This is out in the extraterritorial.
Oh, yeah, that's true. That's true. Okay. No, I don't have a problem with it. No problem. It's cool.
I think the suggestion for three thousand dollars is frankly more reasonable than fifteen hundred. And either way, there is no risk either to the developer or to the village. If it's more than three thousand, they'll pay it. If it's less than three thousand, they get their money back. But I think three thousand frankly is more likely to be in the range of the cost than the fifteen hundred. And therefore, I move to amend the motion by striking fifteen hundred and inserting the original suggested three thousand.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandra. Further discussion?
And can I just ask, just so we have it clarified to as the motion comes around, being that we have two applications to come, and they kind of come in at the same time. They're all the same thing essentially, that one-lot CSM and this preliminary plat. We're talking about that number would cover both aspects of that. When we come to do final plat at a later date, would that something you guys would just want to discuss prior to the final plat submittal to see what's left in the escrow account? If, do you think it'd be even less required at the final plat? The final plat, I suspect, there'll be maybe two hours total time that would be needed. But I just want to make sure that that was out on the table as you guys take your action.
That's my understanding, and that's what I heard you say.
And with that consideration, three thousand to me sounds a little more reasonable. Any comments there? Well, as I understand Robert's rules of order here, we will then vote on the amendment. Mark, do you have any other comment?
No.
Vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, which is to return the motion to the stated one, which is to three thousand dollars. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Do we need to?
I have to vote on the amended main motion.
Okay. The amended main motion would be the suggested motion with three thousand dollars. All in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed that there's no paper in the plan commission section here. And no plan commission.
The meeting was, there was no meeting.
Oh, there was no meeting.
I was, there's been some cancellations, I was trying.
Okay. Personnel Finance Committee. Well, what we're gonna have here simply is to approve a couple of motions here, not the least of which happens to pay our bills.
Remove approval of the December two thousand nine non-recurring claims in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Seven.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions? These are, this four hundred and thirty-eight dollars is left over from December. That's why that one, I mean, we don't usually have, come before you with claims. So, less than five hundred dollars. Just wanted you to know that. And that there will be a second motion to approve the next set of claims. So, we will have a roll call vote on this one. Let's start down at the far, my far left. Mark? Joe? George, yes?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of the little one.
Remove approval of the February two thousand ten non-recurring claims in total amount of forty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Darrell?
One second.
Thank you, Joe.
I have a question. Is there anything for January?
Nothing left over as far as I recall, that was.
We had December, I just thought maybe there was something.
January would have been February.
Yeah.
Okay.
Understand that, understand the question. It's a reasonable question.
All right.
This time it starts from our right. Jim?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, now, we have an interesting situation here regarding the village hall service lift. There's a repair and maintenance plan, and you'll notice that in the description here there are two different plans. Sorry, did you want to talk about those, what your investigation was, I missed? Because I'm in agreement with you on the premium plan.
Well, Mark Ekblad had contacted the lift, Arrow Lift Company to do a repair on the lift, and at that point, they had recommended a couple of plans. And initially, we were considering the basic plan, but then after a phone call to their office and asking some questions regarding the different plans and such, it came to our attention that since it hadn't been serviced or compliance checked since we put it in in oh seven, that when they came and did the repair, they actually did some of the compliance. And if we go with the maintenance of the Performance Plus Plan now, we won't have to go back and do the maintenance, the compliance check that we normally would. The difference between the two plans, basically, the one is mainly maintenance, and there's twenty percent discount on all necessary work as well as priority scheduling. For the Performance Plus Plan, if you go to the platform lift section, it states all the different parts that it covers, replacement of. And so, you really, there's quite a bit more to that. And I guess at, I'm recommending the eight seventy-five, the Performance Basic Plan, or Performance Basic Plan instead of the, I'm sorry, the Performance Plus Plan instead of the Basic Plan. But Mark, did you want to comment on that? You're in agreement, is that, okay?
The five hundred difference, five hundred dollar difference can be made up in one service call, replacing parts, as I understand it. And as you can well imagine, the thing was fairly complicated, or complex piece of equipment. That five hundred dollars can be eaten up very quickly, and that's why Gloria, Mark, and I are recommending the eight hundred and seventy-five dollar plan. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like we're considering two alternatives, the basic plan and the performance plan.
Right.
I think frankly, there's a third alternative.
No plan.
And the third alternative is to self-insure. And if we don't pay a premium, we in effect are self-insuring, and we're saving the premium for a future expense that we know we're going to have. If I look at this with a jaundice eye, I can see that we've had this elevator since oh seven, so we've had it for three years. And we just had it repaired for the first time for three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Now, the real quick math says that that works out to be a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a year. If we don't pay any premium and anticipate that at some point in the future, we're going to have some expense, but we haven't laid out either three seventy-five a year or eight seventy-five a year, it seems to me that we're likely to be better off not to buy any plan and recognize that we're gonna have some expense in the future, but in the meantime, we've saved the money. I think we really need to be, be careful about just saying that the only thing we have to choose between is one of the two plans. I think we've got three things to choose from.
No, no, Mark, am I correct in that that lift, because we are a government and a public office, it needs to have compliance, periodic compliance checks?
Actually, we were not in compliance.
Mark, could you use the mic, please?
Compliance with who?
Basically, well, the village doesn't work under OSHA. We work under Department of Com. And Department of Commerce requires that any lift in a, in a public building be inspected at least once a year to make sure it is up to compliance. So, actually, last year, we were not at compliance. We did not do that. Basically, we missed the thing. This year, when they came in, they actually brought us back up to compliance and everything else. But this is something that we are required to do annually is have that lift inspected.
If we would have no repair costs, but we were going to have an annual compliance inspection, what's the cost of that inspection?
Roughly, it's, and the last one, they did the compliance, and the last one, memory on the bill, I want to say it was a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty dollars. But they did it along with being out here on a service call. That's why they did it at the same time. So, I don't know if there would be an additional charge, it just being the only reason they're here.
Does this company do the compliance check, or is there a?
Correct. Arrow Lift does the compliance check, yes.
And is it annual?
Yes.
Or every other year?
Annual.
And then because there's a load, full load test that has to be done, what, every five years?
I believe it's every five years.
And that is not included with either one of those plans?
I believe it is with the premium. I'm not sure. I have to look through it again myself.
What, what broke, or how did the lift get damaged to the point where we needed a service call?
Basically, what it was is the, the closure on the upper door to lift. Basically, it would not close, it would not stay. Basically, and that door, when that door is closed, it, it's what allows the lift to actually operate. Door, lift will not operate if the doors are not secured. Basically, what happened is, we found one day when we came in, basically, my crew came in to clean the village hall, they found out that when they opened the door, would not close again. And basically, what they determined is that, that door, when you go to, when you actually get in the lift, it takes so many seconds, it'll close after you're in the lift. It'll automatically close itself. What they believe is that somebody was in a hurry and forced the door closed, and that's what sprung the mechanism arm and everything else, and they had to come out and recalibrate the arm and actually reset the controls. I tried working on it myself, but it just, it, so I've done a lot of door closures and construction and everything else, but when it came to that one, when I seen it had the sensors on it, what it did and everything else, and the way it was set up, I decided that it was not something I was gonna mess with.
And that one call was three hundred and?
No, total bill was three hundred and, I believe it was three hundred and eighty-some dollars, something like that. I would have to go back. It's either three sixty, three eighty.
Do we have to decide to make ends?
If you want to, me, have myself and the administrator look more into this, we can look more into it and then come back next month.
No, we referred to Public Works, we talked about it there.
If we don't take it tonight, they're gonna charge us to do, to bring it up to compliance before you can go on to that premium plan. But, I mean, that's.
I agree with Darrell on this kind of thing. You can overshore that thing. The compliance is an issue for us as, you know, you can see on any elevator in any building, they have a certification stamp or inspection stamp. For what we use it for here, I shouldn't be saying this, but even if it isn't working for a while, what do you really use it for typically?
No, I actually don't want to go into that scenario.
But the point is, it's not just, I would, I'm leaning towards Darrell, and I don't see any big hurry to rush into this, to get, to get this plan for this, for the lift that's very seldom used. You pay the two hundred bucks, it's probably gonna be two hundred, two fifty to get a compliance. And that we can't get out of. But as far as repair goes, who knows?
I'm just a little confused because if we pay the three eighty-five, isn't the lift working, and aren't we in compliance for a year?
Yeah, for a year. So, we don't have to, that's what I'm saying, I don't see any need to jump into this tonight.
We just had a repair.
Unless you feel we need to have this program they're offering to where we get on and recover for any potential, any possible repairs.
Well, what was it that you were referring to, Gloria, when you said that we have to do something by tonight, or?
They're offering us to be able to take those, since we haven't done all the maintenance that we were supposed to do for the last couple of years. They're, they're, they normally have all these checks done periodically.
Okay.
Before you're allowed to get on to the Performance Plan. The only thing is, is if you don't do it and you go with the basic plan, it's not a problem. If you want the Performance Plan, you're probably gonna have to pay an additional three hundred bucks for the checks to be done before you set you on the Performance Plan.
That's if we wait. If we wait.
Well, that's if you wait, right.
I don't see the advantage of going on the Performance Plan. I'm trying to figure out what that buys us.
Replacement of parts versus maintenance. Now, I'm not, I'm just answering the questions. I just don't want to see it become one of these things that gets forgotten.
What? The compliance check, it has to be done.
Right.
I'm assuming that was free for a year when we purchased it, or under the warranty?
Well, there's no way we're gonna, those, there's, is there any way that we would not do the compliance check or do the basic plan?
It just has to be something that's.
You don't have to do the basic.
Well, you don't have to do the basic plan to do compliance.
Yeah. I know, but it does, but it has to be inspected once a year to be in compliance.
Correct.
And that's like a hundred and ten bucks or something.
Hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, but that, that was here, but you have to remember, Joe, they were here to do other things. They're here to do it.
My question is, if we scheduled them to come out on a yearly basis to do the compliance check, how much would that be?
It's probably gonna be a couple hundred.
I'd say it's probably gonna be as close to that.
Okay, so then what does the basic plan do for us above that, other than twenty percent discount on necessary work, et cetera?
Yeah, you're just, you're getting the discount, everything else, and then also.
Personally, knowing what I know, which is somewhat limited, I wouldn't go onto the Performance Plan. The only thing that I would vote on tonight is whether to do the basic plan or not. That's kind of, I'm not making a motion, I'm just saying what my, my, my opinion is.
Are you leaning more towards Darrell's recommendation? Or the third alternative? That'd be a better way to say it.
Well, you know, if we said Darrell's alternative, we could also, the only thing that we buy, the only thing that we get if we approve the basic plan tonight is, it offers us the, to go into the Performance Plan without any additional compliance check. Am I, am I understating that or overstating it? Well, I'm saying personally, I wouldn't do that anyway, so I guess what I would prefer to do, send this back to Public Works and let them come up with a recommendation. We'll have more time to look at it. Mark will have, you know, maybe a little bit more time, but I'm, I'm not prepared to spend eight or nine hundred dollars for something that, I don't know how often it gets used, but my guess is it doesn't get used very often.
Well.
And if it, and if it doesn't get used, it's not good, but we're not gonna close the doors here. We're still open for business.
No. Why don't you move to refer it? I'll second it, and then we can move on.
Okay, I move to refer it back to Public Works, or to refer it to Public Works.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of moving this topic back to Public Works indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Speaking of Public Works. And we were, weren't we? Yes, we were.
I'd like to call your attention to a draft document that is in your packets, and this is for information only. I mentioned at the last Public Works meeting that St. Croix County has applied for a planning grant to do study of water condition and water quality of Lake Malibu. grant to do study of water condition and water quality of Lake Malibu, and is in the process right now of forming a stakeholder group to facilitate that study. Obviously, two of the larger stakeholders will be the city of Hudson and the village of North Hudson, because that is the, the water area that is between our two municipalities. This, at this point, is for information. We really don't even need to discuss it. But what I would like you to do is review this draft document. This is the Lake Malibu Grant Project Scope. It will lay out the parameters of what is anticipated. And then, George, I would suggest and respectfully request that at an early opportunity, perhaps the April meeting or the May meeting in your, in your discretion, I would like to have Kyle from UW Extension come and give a short, five to ten minute presentation on the, the grant application, the process, the stakeholder group, and what is anticipated to come out of this. That would be part of the schedule that you see outlined in here. We are currently in March, and it's anticipated to begin the official stakeholder meetings by August. The grant has been submitted, so we're, we're on this schedule. And if you would review this in anticipation of Kyle coming for a brief presentation, I think that would be beneficial.
I did review this. To show you that I did, I noticed the arithmetic mistake on here. It's actually thirteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Well, you're a former accommodation, and I would assume that you would find those kinds of things.
It jumped out at me.
It was, it was a test for you, George.
Okay, good, I pass. Okay. All kidding aside, how about if I turn this back to Public Works and say, find whichever date would work, a regular board meeting, and it'd have to be after April, the only meeting you have in April, is a reorg meeting.
Yeah, I would think the May meeting might make sense, if we could just plan on that.
Yeah. And have it in the Public Works.
Yep, and Becky and Gloria, then I'll arrange with Kyle to be here for a brief presentation.
What I didn't see, I did read this, and I actually understood some of the words. It's, this is very technical.
Very technical.
Very technical. How much, okay, there's a grant, but anytime I hear that there's a grant, I always wonder, okay, what percentage of the cost is actually covered by the grant? And I saw on here that the-
And if this is where you're going, there will be no request for village funds as part of this planning process.
Okay. All right.
The grant is submitted to DNR.
All right, will you then find an appropriate meeting?
I'll follow up on that.
Excellent.
There are a number of items that come out of our last Public Works Committee that are, that are here for consideration of the full board. The first one is a resolution and intent to levy special assessments. For purposes of discussion, I will move approval of Resolution Number Two Zero One Zero Oh One, which is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments under police powers pursuant to Section sixty-six point zero seven oh three Wisconsin statutes for street and storm sewer improvements along the following streets. And we've discussed this several times, Tenth Street North, beginning at the intersection of Michelson Street North, then north to Summer Street North, and Summer Street North from Tenth Street North, extending easterly for approximately two hundred and fifty feet. If that is seconded, then I'd like to have our village engineer comment on this resolution.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sandra.
Yeah, basically, this is kind of the starting process to actually levy the assessments against, there's about thirty different parcels that are going to be affected as part of the project. If you look at the third, the third page, there's a project location map or assessment, Schedule A. That'll, that gives you an idea of the parcels that are going to be affected as part of the project. What this will do then is move forward with, generating the preliminary assessment report. That'll actually get into the more details of what the estimated costs are going to be for the whole project, along with the parcels, what prospectively they're going to be paying for, for the improvements on that section of roadway. Currently, the village's policy with the assessment policy for street reconstruction, since it's over twenty years, it'll be a fifty-fifty split. Fifty percent will be assessed to the property owners, or fifty percent will be picked up by, by the village. Along with that project, there'll be some storm sewer improvements. Current policy, that, that particular item is all picked up by, by the village. So, in a nutshell, that's what this entails. Schedule wise, we'll be looking at having the public hearing held at the, with the denouement date of March thirtieth. That's where we'll open it up to the people along this particular roadway for any comments that they may have. Review the assessment report, and from there, potentially approve the report at that particular meeting also, so. Just to open it up to any questions. Sure.
As I, as I look at this, there are a couple of things that come to mind. The first is, based on what is grayed out here, namely, along Tenth Street North, and then on Summer Street, we have that hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit.
Yes.
We can do this for a hundred and forty-nine, nine ninety-five?
That's what the goal is.
Next question, I have, all these lots are not the same size.
Correct.
How will we break this down and to, to make it fair?
It's frontage foot.
It is frontage foot. Now, is that what the plan is?
Yeah, that's what typically we've done in the past. You know, and there's different credits, per se, for like corner lots.
Yeah.
You know, they're not going to have to pay, like, you know, like Lot Number Eleven, you know, the ninety-five feet along Tenth Street, and then the frontage along Summer Street. It won't be a combination of those two items. There's actually some credits that are allowed for corner lots in your assessment policy.
Well, in fact, isn't Lot Eleven, I don't, I think there's a dwelling on that, isn't that a-
Yep. Be City Hudson, but still, you would-
Yeah.
You would still assess that parcel.
We assess the city.
Sure you do.
How good are they at paying it? No, never mind. Okay. The reason that I ask that is because there has been discussion on pre, some previous jobs where, because of the shape of some of the lots-
Yes.
-or especially around winding roads. Now, these are nice straight roads.
Yes.
But especially around winding roads, it was, I think when we were talking about Station, St. Croix Station, we were looking at just dividing the cost up evenly among all the, the parties involved, so that's why I asked that question.
I'll be honest with you, I still like the idea of just dividing it equally among the number of parcels, because everybody uses the street-
Yeah.
-equally.
Yeah.
As an opportunity to use it, but that's up to whoever.
It's up to the board.
It's up to the, well, it's up to the board. And I'm not making a proposal.
No, I understand.
I'm just stating.
There are actually only, if we look at Tenth Street, there's only two lots, Lots Sixty-eight and Sixty-nine, that are a little bit larger.
Yeah. Yep, the majority of them are on ninety-five feet.
Then you got the corner lots.
Right, you got the corner.
Yeah.
And then you got Lot Twelve, and Lot, a piece of Lot Thirteen, a piece of Lot Ten.
I'm just planting the seed.
Yep.
That's all I'm doing for future consideration.
Okay. Okay. There was a motion, Darrell made the motion, Sandra seconded to adopt this resolution. Are there any more questions?
If it's, you know, if it's, if it's likely to be controversial, that's probably a good idea.
Probably be unanimous, but we'll do it anyway. Mark, you want to start?
Aye.
Joe?
Yep.
George, yep?
Yes.
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 Thank you. So you want to make a video, I see, Darrell?
I do not intend to star in this. And this is one of the, this is one of the things that my colleague Sandra Wayland has indicated in a rather tongue-in-cheek Facebook page, that she is looking forward, she's disappointed to leave the board, but she's looking forward to no longer talking about sewers.
I see.
Yeah, and so, here is, for Sandra's benefit, here is a sewer issue.
Six years of sewers?
You're done with it, right?
But this, we, we did discuss this at some length at, at Public Works, and Mark has indicated the desirability of being able to get video record of, of the sanitary sewers. We do have a proposal from one of the very, this is not a very competitive industry. It's not like there are all kinds of companies that have the capacity to do this. And Mark has, has reviewed, and I believe has also worked with this company in the past. So we have a proposal from InfraTech to do the project, and this would be to televise approximately fifteen thousand three hundred feet of sanitary storm sewer. And their, their proposal for that, at fifty-two cents a foot, would work out to about seventy-nine fifty-six. As we reviewed this in Public Works, it is obvious that there may be, as they get into this, some, some situations where a little latitude is, is desirable. So we frankly propose, and the motion that came through Public Works, I'm going to also move the same motion here to get it on the table for discussion, and that is that we move to approve the proposal from InfraTech to complete the televising of six streets for sanitary sewers, and one street for storm sewer, at a cost not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
And if Mark wants to make any comments about this, I encourage you to do it if they've got any questions.
So basically, we're saying we're going to video just over three miles of sewer?
Correct.
At fifty-two cents a foot.
Correct.
And-
Basically, what these are is, especially in, well, the fourteen thousand three hundred feet that I have down here, this is areas that we've had, we know we've had troubles in either in the past. Some of it's stuff that we've had, basically, part of this, Joe, as you recall, is, when you were the Public Works Chair, we had a section of Lemon Street, we actually had that foam to kill out roots. It's at the point now, it's time to re-televise that, to make sure how that foaming did, you know. Other areas are basically areas we've had trouble in, basically, because of blockages reported by residents. Certain things that have been found, especially Sixth Street, by the treatment plant, they've been jutting those lines and root cutting them, they've been finding things that, you know, pulling out mortar and bricks and stuff like that. At times, it shows us that we have some problems with that pipe. Basically, this is just to go in and see just how bad this stuff is, or if we have trouble areas. We, the section of Michelson Street Storm Sewer, this is a section of storm sewer pipe, every time they back flush, they well at well five, everything goes down this section of storm pipe to get the pot nine. And basically, every year, we have a problem that it keeps freezing up. That tells us that there's something in that storm pipe that's causing an obstruction. And like I brought up there in Public Works Committee, this could be anything from a cable TV line that was been bored through our, bored through our storm sewer, hopefully not, but possibly a gas line, or this, we have an offset pipe. And basically, we'd like to find out what's causing this, and, so we can correct the problem.
Is this budgeted?
Yes, we budgeted ten thousand dollars in this budget for televising the storm sewers within the village.
Let me play out a scenario. They're televising, they're going down Tenth Street, and I'm just picking that because we were just talking about that. And they find a blockage. Next step, dig up the street?
Uh, basically, what it is, is if it's, if we find a blockage such as roots and everything else, basically, what we'll do is we'll have the cameras pull out, we'll have the treatment plant come up, do root cutting, we'll try to go back down again. If we find some kind of blockage, like, because we believe there's a collapsed pipe or something like that, then it'll be televised, and myself, the engineer, will look at it. If we believe that something has to be fixed, we either hire, bring a crew in and fix that diset section of the sanitary sewer, or if it looks like it's in such poor condition, then it's possible that we take another look at this project.
All right, what I'm looking at is, I would hope that we-
I don't believe there's any, we've had this area, you know, the treatment plant has gone through this area, they haven't reported any significant problems as far as not being able to get through it. So I don't believe that's the thing, you know. But myself, it's been a while since we televised it, I believe, you know, we should take a look at it, make sure that we know what we have.
Where I'm going with this is, I hope we do the televising before we start digging the streets.
Correct. If you, if this is approved tonight, that crew can be in here next week.
I don't have any problem with, I'd talked to Mark, oh, probably six months or a year ago, and inadvertently had to get a snake repair kit, and ended up in this place in St. Paul that sells this equipment. And my question of Mark was, with the cost of televising, you know, equipment dropping dramatically with technology, is it even worth looking into? I mean, they had a unit-
The biggest thing is the equipment that you showed, be it anything else, that is more or less for like televising sewer laterals, laterals coming out of houses. These are actually robotic cameras.
Yeah, they're like a little remote control truck you just dropped down there.
You can get those in there, but they're quite a bit more expensive than else. Plus, you have to have the amount of cable and everything else that goes behind it. Basically, these guys have cable that can go out six hundred feet in these trucks. And there it is, you know, it's a little more. Basically, these trucks are just set up for this, but by the time you go and buy a large cargo van and everything else, it's quite a bit of expense.
I just wanted to make sure-
Another thing too, is you also have to, these guys, or this crew, excuse me, when they come in, they have to follow all the Department of Com codes. It means they have to do confined space requirements, they have to do everything else, and we're not allowed to do confined space. We're not allowed to do entry, they are required to do entry procedures and everything else. So there's a lot of paperwork and stuff like that that goes with this. Basically, they have to have the safety equipment in place and everything else while they're doing this.
Sure. Well, I don't know how to run anything much more technical than a snake, but I, I was pretty impressed, because I know they've gone wireless.
There's some very impressive equipment out there.
Oh, you want it on DVD?
Yeah, I'm assuming this is high def, right?
Will be on DVD, and we can make you a copy for your goal.
They show up to do this, you know, and orchestrate the whole thing.
So, one question I do have, so say, and I think George brought this point out, but say that they get halfway through this, and you have to do a repair, and they have to come back and finish this after a repair is made, does that still all fall in, within that?
Well, that's another reason why I had, you know, request to have some additional funds done it. But basically, what it is, is once they do this contract, contract with us to do so many feet, they will come back, they will do that many feet. If it requires them to take more than one chance than they else they can. And the thing is, this company also, if it, for some reason, the treatment plant cannot get here to do the clean, they also have equipment that they can send their own equipment with to actually do the cleaning in front of them, you know, but it is an additional cost. That's why we try to make sure the treatment plant, and the treatment plant themselves, as already told me, is once we give them the list, you know, which they have the list of the thing, once we tell them that they're coming in, they will try to have somebody, truck up here just to make sure they rerun everything. If it hasn't been ran in a while, they'll rerun it.
Cool. Any further discussion?
It's more than I need to know about sewers.
There you go, Sandra.
It's oddly interesting, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, this is a spending issue, so let's start a roll call vote, start with Jim this time?
Sure, why not?
I'll take that as a yes.
That would be, that'd be a yes, huh?
Sandra?
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes.
Yeah. What was he, Darrell again?
Eighty-five hundred, not to exceed. The next item, we also talked at some length at Public Works about the proposed utility permit application that's in front of you. This is here tonight primarily for any comments or questions that anyone has. This is not ready for an action item yet, but it is conceptually a new step. The village does not currently utilize a permit application for- The village does not currently utilize a permit application for utility work, and there is certainly some anecdotal evidence that it would be desirable. There have been cases that Mark has referenced where work has been done and uncompleted with some of the repair and restoration by the utility contractor. This would give us an opportunity to not only have an application, but an attached fee that would be used for that restoration work if necessary, if the contractor did not complete it. Mark and Gloria have reviewed this, have, or Becky, I guess, has been involved with it, somebody, Mark and somebody, our crack staff, have gotten other application samples from some of our contiguous municipalities. It's resulted in what's in front of us right now. I think that what Public Works is wanting the board to do is look at this, review it. Any comments or observations you've got right now, pass them back to Mark, and we're going to try and refine this into a document that we can approve at Public Works and then bring here for final approval. But it seems an overdue process that we have not had, and we will ultimately have a final document here for your review.
Would this be, I'm gonna use one of our local contractors as an example, this is almost seem, all right, we call Zappa Construction out to do a job. Would they need this, would they need this permit?
Turn it over to Mark.
It would depend on if, if we're contracting, for your example, Zappa Brothers Escavating to work for the village?
Yeah.
Like water sewer, something like that?
Yeah.
No. This is just basically for utilities that want to do, install their lines on, within our right of ways.
Thank you.
And basically, it'd be like for XL Energy, Comcast, AT&amp;T, you know, anybody else, Northern Natural Gas, basically, anybody like that. Basically, the largest thing that really came up to me, you know, I've been thinking about this for years, but really came up was last summer when we had, because of the amount of antennas stuck on the Deer Path Water Tower on Summit Lane, the amount of work done on Kratley and Summit, basically, it was, I believe, Becky, three different occasions, that we've had companies in here, instead of all trying to go in at about the same time, and two of them, well, twice, I believe, was the same company. It's just two different divisions that weren't communicating with each other. One of those still is not complete with that project, they still have to do the restoration in the spring. That, to me, meant that those residents went through a lot more than they should've had to go through. And maybe if we had these kind of permits in place, and I'd make these companies actually, okay, let's get all of our ducks in a row and...
All right, is this amount here of three hundred dollars?
Well, that's this, these, this, basically, myself and Becky, and I would like to give a lot of credit to her, she was the one that actually contacted different municipalities, starting with St. Joe's, which she used to work with. And we received three different permit applications from, different ones, one that both her and I agreed on looked the best was the Village of Baldens. So, we went through theirs, and the largest thing that their Public Works Director stated was that he did not believe that the deposit was large enough. And I believe their deposit was two hundred and fifty?
I don't, I don't think this matches our fee schedule. I hadn't seen this before.
Yeah, I know, and that's, that's why it's here, is for even for you, you know, everybody to...
There's other issues, that's where the highlighted stuff is.
Yes, correct. Yeah, that's what he said, we just brought this, we brought this to Public Works as a rough draft, we know there's a lot of things that are gonna have to be, and basically, one thing, I know the village attorney is probably gonna have to look at this too, to make sure that...
We're not requesting any action on this.
Right, I understand.
We just would like to have everybody look at it, and please give us your input, you know.
I think one of the biggest things on here, I know it's going back to Public Works, is a fee on here. Based on what you said about the last example we had out here on Summit and Kratley, I don't think the three hundred is enough to...
Well, that's why it has, that you can't actually go up to having them doing a bond up to ten, you know, ten thousand dollars or more, you know, but that's, that would be something.
It seemed to me, when I read this, the first time, I thought of, this, this seems like, why not get a bond instead?
Yeah, and that's the biggest thing, and in some ways, this might actually, even through this permit thing, it might actually have to go to like plan commission, this whole permit thing too, because they're the ones that probably would be the ones actually dealing with this and then setting it...
Do you envision these three things as sort of options, depending upon the scope of the work, maybe? There's a fee if it's a small job?
I guess, that's, yeah, I'd say, basically, if it's a smaller, it's a smaller job, like just inserting a cable across the street to get from a box to a residence, then that's sure, that's a smaller job. But if you're looking at something like the scale of what they did on Kratley and Summit, then, then I believe it should be, you know, looked at for more of a...
Then perhaps the, whether it be a certificate of insurance, an indemnity bond, or a fee, be based on the cost of the job?
That's highly possible.
You probably always want a fee just to cover your administrative costs.
And I don't know, Kevin, you might have seen these in other utility, in other municipalities, you know, you might have idea what they're, how they do theirs, you know.
Our primary reason for bringing it here is to generate any comments, any observations, because it's a work in progress, and we want you to know what we're working on. Thanks, Mark. Now, we get to the highlight of the evening, our engineers have been patiently waiting so that they can explain to us the technical application of equivalent runoff units, and that's what's in front of us. To get this in front of us, I move that we set the equivalent runoff unit value at three thousand five hundred square feet. That's seconded, then we can discuss it and have our engineers talk about it.
I'll second that.
Second from Sandra.
Sorry. Does everyone have the, a copy of the materials we went over at the Public Works meeting? Yes, okay. My name, I know most of you, my name is Patrick Beaufort, from Cedar Corporation, I'm in the planning department, work with Kevin, and we're also working with Rob Jones, another one of our engineers, on creating the stormwater utility. I'm gonna provide some information about how we determined the square footage related to the ERU, or the equivalent runoff unit. That's basically the baseline of the creation of the stormwater utility, and the square footage associated with it will determine how many total ERUs will be in the village. Okay? And typically, an E, one ERU is represented by a square footage of a representative, a square footage of impervious surface of a representative single-family home within a community. So typically, each single-family home gets assessed one ERU. And then, the square footage we have associated with that will determine, will help determine how many additional ERUs are within the community. And this is based off the amount of impervious surface that we digitize related to commercial properties, institutional properties, industrial properties, and then multifamily. So, what we did to try to get, determine the square footage associated with one ERU was sample areas, residential areas within the, within the village, and we looked at eight areas, and those are shown on that first table that you have here, and we looked at areas, St. Christ Station, the ridges, I think, let's see, over in this area is Willow River, Malalo, four, I think this is Shady Oaks area, root is right in this area, Glen Oaks over here, seven is Thorn, and then eight is Ori, Willow View Oak Meadows. So, what we did was, we tried to look at some of the new subdivisions, and then different areas within the developed village that had been here a while, that may have developed differently. So, typically, the original portion of the, of any community has smaller, lots smaller homes. And I think even within our comm plan, we've, we've identified that as the village grew, the, the lots have gotten progressively a little larger. So, we tried to get a good mix of sampling areas. Within all these areas, we looked at five properties, and we tried, we tried to avoid the, the largest property and the smallest property, and tried to get a good mix. So, looking at these eight areas on the sheet, sampling five residential, single-family homes within there, we've come up with an average and then a median for impervious surface. At the end of the table, we add all of those together. So, with the eight sampling areas, we had an average impervious surface of just under thirty-nine hundred square feet, with the median or middle value of those being thirty-four hundred square feet. So typically, we like to see those numbers closer together. So, the next thing we looked at was taking out the extremes, we took out the highest average square foot subdivision, and the lowest average square foot subdivision, thinking that the smaller areas are not representative of typical development and future development. And then, the area with the largest average up in St. Christ Station is also not typical to the rest of the community. So, by taking those out, and that would be on the next table, the average of the six subdivisions that we look at goes down to just under thirty-six hundred square feet, with the median staying at thirty-four hundred square feet. So, those are closer to each other, that's how we came up with a recommended range to look at between thirty-four hundred and thirty-six hundred square foot, square feet per ERU. Then after discussion and questions at Public Works, the recommendation was made to use thirty-five hundred as the benchmark per ERU.
When you go in, you walk onto a site, and you start measuring, what are you actually measuring?
We're measuring roof surface, driveway, sidewalk, patio.
Sidewalk, which sidewalk?
From, let's say, from the front...
Front door?
Door, to the right of way line.
Okay.
Not the sidewalk within the right of way.
I knew that, but I wanted you to say it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what we look at, so what we do is, we go in and we digitize around those areas, and then we also digitize the islands of grassy areas within, so...
Okay, got a swimming pool, eight hundred square feet, is that considered impervious?
We have not, we have not done swimming pools, included that.
I mean, it's collecting water, it's not...
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
People are gonna ask these questions, and that's why I'm posing them.
Yeah, that was our reasoning too, I mean, there's water going in and it's staying. So, that's what we came up with now, this, what this means then, with that thirty-five hundred, we start looking at multifamily homes. And typically, we group them in two categories, two, three, fourplex multifamily homes, and then larger than that. So, as we're doing the sampling, what we may find is two, three, fourplex multifamily homes within the community have a much smaller average square footage. So, what we may discuss is that they would not be charged a full ERU. That hasn't been determined yet, because we're, we're still doing sampling. But for example, a dwelling unit within a multifamily home could be charged two-thirds of an ERU, or three-quarters of an ERU. It really depends on the community. So, that's what we're looking at too. And then, once we look at the larger units, anything above a fourplex, and we start looking at commercial, industrial, institutional areas, what we've been doing is just dividing, because there's such a variety of square footage of impervious surface, we just divide the total area by that, that base square footage of thirty-five hundred. And that helps us determine how many ERUs are within the village. And so, the number of ERUs, if you, if you take, we'll start looking at potential projects and budgets, once we get that total amount, and we divide it by the number of ERUs, we can come up with a rough idea of what the charge associated to an ERU would be. So, the important part at this point now is, is to agree on the square footage associated with one ERU.
I don't have any problem with the calculations, I'm kinda struggling with what you're gonna do with that number, the ERU, once you get it.
Well, based on that square footage, we can determine how many ERUs...
Yes.
Total.
Yeah.
Okay. So, at the...
And then what?
Sure. At the same time, we're looking at costs incurred by the village right now related to stormwater maintenance, whether it's...
And, okay, keep going.
Okay, so, we'll look at costs already, the village is paying for street cleaning, any pond maintenance, any new ponds, things like that, and total that up. We'll also look at future projects related to stormwater. For example, there are a lot of new ponds within the village because of new regulations with stormwater management. Those ponds, over time, will have to be maintained. Now, they'll have to be dredged out eventually, and that, what you take out of there is considered hazardous waste, so it's something you can't just haul away and dump. So, it has to be hauled to a landfill, that will handle it.
I'm trying to think, you know, in the village, there, there are people that don't have storm sewer, and are they gonna be charged with this ERU?
Um...
They're not on storm sewer?
Yeah, it would be a community-wide assessment for all parcels within the village.
Even though they don't use that service, they're gonna pay for it?
Some, I mean, eventually, some of the stormwater is gonna end up, you know, either into a regional pond facility, or, you know, the ultimate goal is, you know, to try to clean up the water before it actually ends up in the St. Cray River or Lake Malo.
There's the potential to build a credit system into the ordinance though, where people who make, you know, you could create that how you want it, people who are making no use of it, or people who have their own private system, could get a credit and thus get a lowered, you know, a more fair bill on that.
Well, and, and I'm thinking of St. Christ Station, obviously, there's, there's no, there's no stormwater runoff that would, that would, I would think would go anywhere other than the ditches that are there. And so, the, the water that has run, the water that comes out of the buildings and the, and the ERUs that is there is going to permeate through the ground.
Give you the flip side of that though, Joe. Several years ago, we experienced a lot of sand piles down here in the Malalo.
Yep.
Cost the village about thirty-five thousand dollars to get that cleaned up.
I was there, I remember.
And that money came out of the village taxes. So, the whole community was actually paying for that thirty-five thousand dollars then. I'm just using that as the example, if we don't have this ERUs and fees and so on, let's just say we decided right now, we're not gonna do this, then any cleanup in the future comes out of the whole village anyway. So, I'm just, just throwing that out as the other way to look at it.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, I'm just...
I, I, yep, yep.
Questioning the, the logic and the mathematics.
Sure, and to complicate it more, though you may not have a storm, a storm sewer system there, you probably have street sweeping.
And we're in the process of getting the calculation ready for how do we, how do we fund dollars that are going into the storm sewer, the storm sewer utility fund? That's what this is really all about.
Yes.
In order to do that on an equitable basis, we need to determine what is the value, and it'd be somewhat, it's whatever we say it is, but that becomes then the calculation that's... that's, that's used. Based on this formula, we determine at Public Works that the recommendation we would make here is that it's reasonable to follow their data and simply say that the square footage, the, the hard surface, in other words, of one unit is thirty-five hundred square feet, then that formula will translate into the other properties, the commercial properties, the multifamily, the et cetera. To determine the funding formula then, the division, use that as, as the, as the division factor to, to fund the utility fund, stormwater utility fund.
And the village attorney is correct, we usually come up with mechanisms and ways of getting credits. So if you do things, that will improve the stormwater quality or quantity. You can get your ERUs reduced.
So you could end up with fractional ERUs?
You probably could, yeah. It depends on how, you know, you wanna move that decimal point.
ERUs is thirty-five hundred square feet. You have a commercial site that's all asphalt and roof. That's, say, an acre, what's their, what's the, how do you count the ER unit there then?
Okay, so you would, you would calculate how much impervious surface is there by square foot and divide it by that thirty-five hundred. That's set as a base. So that would be a little over ten. It might be ten or twelve.
Commercials would have the same rate as residential?
Well, yeah, yeah, the square footage, it would be based off the same square footage.
I know we're gonna have issues down the line with that if we're gonna use a one-for-one.
Well, make sure you understand.
I don't care.
No, if it's seven thousand square feet.
I don't care.
If it's seven thousand, then it's two units. That's just, just the formula.
But you're also mandated to put in X amount of parking, you're also mandated to do a lot of different things than a residence has to.
Oh, understand.
Tax structure for a business is a lot different than for a residence.
Right, that's the point. That water needs to go someplace.
Well, I don't care, I know, but in the final analysis, it's what, how many dollars you pay at the end of the year, whether it's in this funding thing or in taxes. And if I'm gonna get clipped again and plus taxes, they're probably not gonna go down. And for the obligations that a business has to keep going versus a residence, I think there has to be some way of looking at this funding arrangement.
And, and, and that's one way those credits work? So property owner?
I'm just saying, I'm just asking you, because I can tell you right now that I'm gonna have an issue with how this is funded.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess the prime example would be like the, you know, the new addition to the gas station, the Freedom Oil. You know, they're putting a rain garden in, some of that previous concrete along with the, already have stormwater pond. So there would be some kind of a credit reduction for their particular fee, so you're not paying all that burden.
I'm thinking of the church across the street. And you look at the size of that parking lot.
Well, and, and I would say that the taxes should go down because if these expenses are being moved to this other fund.
Right.
And funded by a different revenue source, then the street sweeping per se would no longer be.
Out of the general fund.
Out of the general fund and out of the tax levy.
And every single.
Is that what we're saying here?
Every single family home is one ERU.
Yep.
Not, never more than that.
No.
So even if you have three acres and an eight-hundred-foot-long driveway and it's one ERU.
It does, it, the three, it doesn't matter what the size of your lot is, just the impervious surface. So, if you have a ten-acre lot or a, or a half-acre lot and you each have, you know, one person has three thousand square feet of impervious, impervious surface, the other person has five thousand, you pay the same, because you're, you're trying to average it out. So it's not based on lot size, but just the impervious surface.
So, so you have a lot of impervious surface on a single-family residence, you are at one ERU?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, this is just to get the four engineers from studying each lot and calculating.
I totally understand.
Each roof.
But as Mark said, when you get into commercial property, the single-family thing is out, they take and calculate out and divide.
They are gonna calculate each.
Each individual one.
And industrial.
Yep, okay. Do we have any ponds, storm sewer ponds?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's multiple.
Yep.
Yep.
Something like that somewhere? Lake Malaloo?
Oh, there's one right at the intersection of Summers and Ten.
Can I, you know, the.
Water ponds.
Just boil it down to, you know, what, do we have any idea what it's gonna cost for one ERU?
Yeah, we have, I guess there's a handout that we.
Yeah, we haven't determined anything yet, but we do have some information related to what other people are charging, other communities are charging within the area.
Yeah, I think that's in your package too, the handout.
Did you, did you, were you able to print out that other one we found?
Yeah, I did have it.
Okay. So, what we handed out at the last meeting was, was a questionnaire we sent out to communities in our area and it has the, there's a column for the quarterly storm sewer rate. And so for example, in Altoona, it's nine dollars, so that would be thirty-six dollars annually per ERU. In Barron, it's six dollars. Chatek, six seventy-five. Chippewa Falls, nine dollars. Eau Claire is eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents. And they're required, I think they've been required by the DNR to do a lot more work within that community, that's why theirs is higher. Menominee is eight dollars. New Richmond, I believe, is seven sixty-two. River Falls in St. Croix County and Pierce are both nine dollars and forty-two cents. And then we. Yeah, we found one that actually has more throughout the state and this is, I believe, it was called the Fox Wolf Watershed. The Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance. We just found this one recently. And this is all related to stormwater. So it shows the population, the year the, the utility was created, the size of the ERU, the annual dollar per ERU, if there's a credit policy and what's the maximum amount of the credit policy. So in some cases, you can get one hundred percent back in some communities, others you can get fifty percent.
I think Menominee's the lowest, twenty?
Yeah, I think the city of Menominee has twenty percent reduction.
Wonder why there's so much.
There's some ERUs that are fairly large and we think they, I don't know why, but our guess is they just took the minimum lot size. That's what the number seems to represent, is a minimum lot size in a community for
Well, it sounds like we're gonna have a lot of rain gardens around. I mean, we get a credit if we plant a rain garden?
It may, it may be a rain garden, you know, some sort of ditch, swell.
You guys have done a lot of rain gardens?
Yeah, we actually have one in our parking lot.
Oh, yeah?
Did the city of Menominee give you a credit for that?
Um, I think they will, we didn't apply for it.
You know, there's, this just brings to mind some conversations we had and I'm just gonna make a statement here about storm sewers and curb and gutter and that sort of thing. And the village isn't growing, I don't know that we're gonna be annexing anything in the future. Or where the next development is going to be, but I would hope that we all keep in mind that to put in these services, storm sewer and curb and gutter is expensive in the first place, very expensive. And then you have to maintain it and then the water has to go someplace and then you have to dig out the ponds or it might, all this stuff might go into the Malaloo River and then we've got all that sediment to clean up periodically. I, I would hope that in the future, when we consider this, you know, developing any property that's associated with North Hudson, that we, we look very closely at not putting in storm sewer and curb and gutter and allow the, unless there's some erosion, erosion issue or something like that, design it so that the, the water hits there, stays there and permeates through the soil there. That's just a, a comment that I think would, would serve us well in the future. I know other cities are, and we've had this conversation, I know, with Kevin, and I'm just bringing it up to the board, so just a gentle reminder that we, a lot of people think that, boy, curb and gutter is, is, is really the way to go if you have a community and it might be in certain cases, but it isn't, it isn't panacea, it isn't the best thing for all cases. In fact, you should consider what would happen if you didn't use it, both short-term and long-term. And I think the pendulum is swinging to not putting it in. But thanks, guys.
Well, yeah.
That's a start here.
Well, and especially with what Darrell was talking about earlier with the total mass load issues with Lake Malaloo, I mean, this is all going to have to be done, there's no doubt about it. And nobody likes to pay more money, but, you know, we, we do need to know what's going on.
What I'm saying is, is, you know, back about ten years ago, when we designed that project for Helen Street and that sort of stuff, they put in pipes that went down to drain those storm sewers down to Lake Malaloo, I think on that project. And then, ten years later, we gotta dig that stuff out for, you know, what? We had several cases of that down there and that was with a new installation. And I, and I'm not faulting anybody here, I'm just saying that, that this is relative, you know, within the last ten years or so, you know, that construction project and, and.
Two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two.
I have that chiseled in my driveway.
I'm just saying that, that had we not put that in and allowed the, you know, because we didn't have curb and gutter up there. We didn't have storm sewer. I'm not sure that we would've had the same expense in the village on an annual basis for, we certainly wouldn't, we certainly wouldn't have had the same kind of clean-out problem in Lake Malaloo. Maybe we would've had some, but we wouldn't have had that expense.
You wouldn't have had it from Helen Street.
That's right.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion on the table? Darrell made the motion, Joe seconded it.
Nope, excuse me. I'm just reading the wrong one.
Yes, there's a motion on.
Usually right.
Simply establish the value of an ERU at thirty-five hundred square.
That's, okay.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we need to vote on that, call a motion, is that the idea?
Who seconded that, Darrell?
Sam motion.
Sam?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of establishing one ERU to be equivalent to thirty-five hundred square feet of impervious area indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and finally, we're at the last item under the Public Works committee agenda. This is taking longer than a Public Works meeting, by the way. And we do have in front of us a claim that has been presented. I want to stress that this is a claim that is not coming from a homeowner. There was a, a baggage, a sewer baggage on Michaelson Street. The, the damage has been paid to the homeowner, the, the cleanup and restoration costs by their homeowner's insurance. And so there is not a homeowner that's being held in the middle here. This is a claim for reimbursement by the homeowner's insurance, claiming that it is the responsibility of the village to reimburse. Our insurance carrier has reviewed the claim, has indicated that they're recommending that we deny the claim because we do not have liability in this case. And so the motion that I would present is to deny the claim pursuant to Wisconsin statutes ninety-three point eight zero one G because the village responded reasonably and there is no liability to the village.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Where exactly was the blockage? Was it in the lateral or in the line?
Basically, the blockage that sent the sewage back through the lateral into residents was in the sanitary sewer line on Michaelson Street.
That is maintained by the, the village?
Yes, but as they, we had no way of knowing, you know, we had no advanced knowledge of we had a problem in that area or anything else. So basically, the blockage was caught, but from what we, what we could witness, it was, believe, ruts and then most likely toiletry issues and stuff like that caused blockage, clinging to the roots and caused the blockages in line.
But there's more than one house on that?
There's only one house affected.
One house affected, but there's more than one house on that line, obviously.
It was basically, it was the trunk sewer basically on Michael Street from Eighth Street North to Sixth Street North.
I'd like to quote a, from Midwest Claim Service, a part of a paragraph. "The basis of this denial should be that there is no negligence on behalf of the village in North Hudson." It continues, "The village had no prior notice. The municipality has no liability unless it knew or should have known of the existence of the defect and had a reasonable amount of time to repair the defect." I think that, as I read this, that to me was the crux of this whole reason for denial.
Okay, I'm just saying, in terms of precedence, have we ever paid for this in times past?
Usually, the resident does not have a insurance coverage for that, their own insurance that they've been paying for.
Does not have coverage?
Right.
But in this case, they did?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor saying, in Darrell's motion to deny, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Thank you, Darrell. Public Safety.
We don't have a report, is there anything, Mark, that you wanted to?
I think this kinda double dips with the, the park board. We did not have, Public Safety did not have a meeting last month, but I was asked by Colleen O'Brien-Berglen, who was not able to make it tonight, just to get up and, and remind the viewing public as well as the board that we are currently putting together the plaque, the signage related to Chief Jansen Memorial Park. We're looking for citizens who were affected by Chief Jansen, his leadership, specifically when they were youth or, or children back in, in, in the day when he would've been dealing with them in a positive or possibly in, in his role as, as chief or, or police officer with the village, to provide us with stories or with short statements or things that he may have said to them that, that not only changed maybe the way that they did things, but made them look at, at the world in a, in a bit of a different way. I know that, in talking with a lot of different people, that Chief Jansen really had a, a different view on how laws should be, I guess, enforced and really how to get people to change their ways without necessarily, you know, writing that citation or issuing that, that summons to come to court and those types of things. So, we're looking at trying to get some stories put together to be able to tell or, or read those stories at the, at the dedication of the park, which has not yet been determined when that dedication is gonna be taking place, but we'd like to be able to put some of that information onto the plaque, onto the signage at the park as well as to use it as the, to provide the family with kind of an heirloom from his. to provide the family with kind of an heirloom from his time here as chief. We have asked that those stories and that information be turned in to the village by March fifteenth. We're looking, obviously, at a short timeframe, but we did, we did ask that it be brought up at a previous board meeting, and I am not sure that it got the attention that it needed at that point, so we wanna make sure that we do have people send in those stories, and they can send them in to the village hall, to the police department, to Colleen O'Brien-Berglin's email address, to my email address. We don't care how they get here, but we're looking at trying to get them here by March Any questions on that?
Good.
All right. Thank you.
We did not have a meeting last month, so we have nothing to report at this point.
Okay. And Park Board, even though Quinn isn't here, would somebody like to talk about the Cub Scouts? Is it Cub Scouts? Yeah.
Is Mark gonna talk?
Basically, we have a request from a, the local Cub Scout troop, third graders from North Hudson, would like to build eight bluebird houses and place them within village parks. And I guess this, this, Quinn had this on here, just for an information, only thing for us, I wasn't at the last park board meeting, but I, I know that the park board is, was in favor of allowing them to put up, build and install the birdhouses in the park.
Six or seven, I'm sure, whatever.
If you can approve it, I guess.
I was just wondering if this needs a motion.
Ah, well, that's-
We'll, we'll make this a, since it's on the agenda, approval requested, I think it's wonderful, so. And I have one of my colleagues here make a motion to approve the Cub Scouts putting up bluebird houses.
I'd like to do that.
Would you please? Get the, out of the sewer, right?
Yes. We approve the Boy Scout, eight-
Cub Scout, Cub Scout.
Cub Scout, bluebird houses.
Thank you, Sandra. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thanks, John.
Can I ask a question of Mark? Maybe Mark knows. What is the situation with the refilling of the doggy disposable?
Mutt mitts?
Yes.
If they live in order, they should be in next week.
Oh, okay.
Mutt mitts.
Mutt mitts.
Probably should finish-
Let's, let's finish our, our Cub Scout birdhouses first, okay? And then we'll get to talking about the doggy poop.
Probably shouldn't.
That's not, that's not on the agenda.
Well, she can ask a question.
Yep.
Perfectly all right. We're not gonna be voting on. All in favor of allowing the Cub Scouts to put up some bluebird houses indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Great.
All right, now you can add about the-
I, I just wanted to get him before he got away.
That would be good.
No second.
All in favor of adjourned, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We are officially adjourned, and we're done with this meeting.
Yes, we are.
There's plenty of opposition.
Yeah, there's plenty of opposition. Just hopefully leave us alone.
John? Oh, cool. Oh, yeah.
I designed these.
Well, sir.
That's not bad.
Thank you.
That's a nice spot for your name.
I would love to. My pen dried out while I was during the meeting.